Good evening and welcome to the May 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Yorktown Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Gordon Fine. I chair the board. Joining me tonight is John Meistrich and Bob Fahey, our special counsel, Adam Rodriguez, and our legal assistant, Mizreen Kuri. First thing we need to do is set up next month's meeting. Next month's meeting will be held here in Town Hall at 6:30 PM on June 27th. If you have to send out mailings in this month, the mailings must be sent out between June 3rd and June 12th. If you don't send them out between those dates, we can't open the hearing next month. There is a site visit date, but from looking at the new business on the agenda, it does not look like we have any site visits to do. But if we do have need site visits, it's June 22nd. In order to do your mailings, you must go to Town Hall, go to the assessor's office, tell them you're sending out mailings for zoning board application, tell them your address. They will then give you the name, show you the list of the names and addresses of those parties you have to notify about your requested application. You write those down on the form that was supplied to you with your application, and then split the mailings back to the building department before the next meeting. Those mailings must go out by first-class mail with certificate of mailing. They do not have to go out by certified mail, only certificate of mailing. You also must post a sign on your property and submit a picture of the sign on the property along with the affidavit saying that the sign was properly posted and in the right timeframe. Moving on, we need to approve last month's minutes. Everybody received the copy?
Yes.
Comments, questions?
Nope.
Okay, move to approve the minutes of last month's. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first, the application on new business is short, property at 1300 Baldwin Road. Application for renewal of accessory apartment that requires a special use permit. Nobody here on that? We're going to handle that administratively. Set it down for a public hearing on the 27th and refer to the building inspector. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ahmed, 1271 Fair Hills Drive. Application renewal accessory apartment, requires a special use permit. Set that down to be handled administratively, refer to the building department, and public hearing on the 27th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Damiano's been on for a while already. That's at 756 Hanover. That's for special use permit for new accessory apartment. That's being adjourned by the applicant.
How long has it been on?
They're working with the building department.
Okay, alright.
Next is Kunha. Anybody here on that? I will come back at the end on that one. We're not sure if they were going to adjourn that or not. The next one up is Suma. Anyone here on Suma? Okay. That's a renewal. We'll come back to that also. Actually, it's for a new owner, so they're supposed to be here. Aren't they supposed to, were you notified to be here?
Do they have new walls? No.
Well, it's a new owner.
Um, he's supposed to come, so I'm not sure.
We'll come back to that one.
Send the car for him. Go get him the car.
Pulcha? Got to come up. Hey, I see everybody who's standing, please have a seat somewhere. The seats up front, the seats in the middle. Just don't block the camera down the middle. You got to buy the podium, sir.
He's got to help his wife with the, this new guy doing.
Right up to the podium. This is an application to legalize a deck with pergola and rear yard setback of two feet where ten is required at 201 Friends Road. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you please state your names for the record, please?
Kathleen Pulcha.
Joseph Pulcha.
Okay. And this is a deck, it's, how long's the deck been there?
Twenty-two years.
Was that built by you or a prior owner?
By me.
Built obviously without a permit since you're here today to legalize it, correct?
Well, it's basically an eight inches off grade at one end and about eighteen inch off grade on the housing.
But is it-
Not attached to the house.
Okay. And you have some, you have built something, built atop of it also? And does the stairway that was, the stairway go on top of that as well?
No, it's not attached to the deck at all.
So the stairway's not-
It leads to the deck, it leads to the deck, but it's not attached.
I understand, but it comes down onto the deck?
Yes, yes.
Was the stairway built with a permit?
The stairway is replacing the stairway that was there when we bought the house.
Still usually needs a permit, doesn't it, Joe?
Yeah, they should get a permit.
Yeah. Stairway, whether you're replacing an older one or not, needs a permit.
Sorry.
That's alright. That's why you're here?
Yes.
Uh, do we have a memo?
I didn't see it here. Go through the file. I didn't see it.
Is there a memo on this one?
It should be in there. Is there a wall sticker on it?
Alright, I'll look and see if I can find it. I didn't see it.
It's like, well, it's on the screen, but-
No, I don't see it.
Yeah, it's right here. Okay, we have a memo from the building department dated May 20th, signed by Steve Frietta. He found no other violations. What do we need to do about the stairway?
The survey that's in the file, is that the original survey from 1966?
Yes.
Yes.
And was there, was there a platform there in 1966?
No.
You edited it 22 years ago, so there was never anything there before that?
Just grass.
So that was drawn into the survey?
I drew it in, yes.
Okay, alright, we weren't certain, I was just saying.
I thought I had initially dated it.
Yeah, I just couldn't tell whether it was part of the original survey, whether it was drawn in later on. We have two letters in the file from neighbors. One is from Bill Thorpe and the other one, they're both from Bill Thorpe. Why do I have two of them?
Clicks the same button.
Oh, one, no, additional information, two different letters. Is Mr. Thorpe here? You want to step up and speak, or you want me to read you a letter? It's up to you. Entirely up to you. Just make room for him, sir, please. Just step up to the microphone so we can hear what you're saying. And just give your name. I know it said it, but-
William Thorpe.
Okay. And what's the nature of your objection to the application?
Well, you know, it stems from they had a-
Just slide over to the microphone.
Stems from they had a new survey. I was trying to be a good neighbor all these years. They had a new survey and it turns out that an existing driveway I had that was there before I moved there 30 years ago was about three, two to three inches over on their, and that's why they got the survey, because they didn't want, when I was going to redo my driveway. They put stakes right through my driveway.
Who did the new survey?
The Pulches.
I understand, I meant owner.
Because when I brought somebody in to give me an estimate, right, to do the driveway, she came running out and saying, oh, you gotta, you know, it's going to be a problem later on if you try to sell the house, right? I said, I'll have them move it back. So they had the survey anyway, put the stakes through my driveway, which I was moving anyway. So I still kind of looked the other way on that. But as things started turning out, and I know that it's been there for a while, but it is within two feet of my property line, and it's the back of their house sits along the side of my house. They have plenty of property in front to put something in. Now, here's the issue. They started doing, she started doing things like moving trash that I used to put, the bulk trash, for 30 years in the same spot, which was down the road. She said it was, you know, her property line went there. So they started kind of bullying us with this property line that they put in. So I was like, well, if that's what, how it's going to be, you know, we feel that the variance should not be approved at this point because they have done things all along that, since that survey was put in, they put a slate patio in the-
When was that survey done?
Three years ago, maybe?
So you have a new survey from three years ago, happened the survey then files dated from 1966?
So it wasn't a survey?
You just had the property corner stayed.
Right, right. They called it a survey, right.
Right, but usually they give you a printout of what they did.
No, no, we just wanted the property line.
So they just, they put, they put the stakes-
We wanted two legs of the property line done.
But you got nothing on paper because it's hard for us to even be 100% certain that your deck is exactly two feet, 10 inches of, yeah.
Because the survey would tell us specifically where it is.
And then, so what, and they also have another structure that's less than two feet away that's, I don't know what it's, it has, holds a vine that goes across that's tipping over and stuff with, and that's less than two feet, but-
That's on top of the pergola that's on top?
No, that's alongside it. I pointed that out to the-
Some things need permits and some things don't.
Yeah, well, I mean, it seemed, I mean, if I was to put a fence up, I would need a-
Depends on the size of the fence.
Right, right. Anyway, so they, so since this marking has been done, they actually put a slate patio in right alongside the property line. They use the property line as, as the markers, you know? So it's right, it butts up there with a fire pit that's less than eight feet away from my property line, and the smoke comes all into me. My, so my issue is this, is they have plenty of property in front. I'm not trying to say that they can't have recreational things like that. They have, the back of the house, the way it was set up, I don't know why, when it was built, it was put up this way. But I, you know, I bought my house that way and the deck wasn't there when I bought it. But, you know, so over the time, I tried to, trying to be a good name and stuff like that, but now I'm getting bullied. I've had a realtor come in because I'm going to retire in a few years, and I've been told that there's going to be an issue for us, and not only them, but for us, because of this whole situation with things sitting on there. So, you know, I'm, we're against having this variance now because if I'm going to be bullied and the property line, because of her, is becoming a battle line now, and I have to adhere to all these things, I'm not sure why they didn't. I've had to get permits for everything I've done and variances for things that I've had done. So I'm not sure why, you know, this is, you know.
Let me ask the applicants, what is the use of the platform?
The platform that's in the yard?
It's an eating area.
It's an eating area, it's a relaxation area. It's been there for 22 years without problems. Mr. Thorpe tells a nice story.
You got to move closer to the microphone.
Mr. Thorpe tells a nice story about my harassing him. I told him to stop putting his kitchen refuse, his recycling, and his bulk garbage on my property.
Well, we don't, we don't really get into arguments between neighbors.
So that, that's-
We'll hear them, but really aren't interested in them.
That's what started it, and he promised me, as he was yelling in public, calling me names and degrading me because of my visual disability, he promised me that he would take it down.
Let me tell you this. When we do have an area variance, some of the factors we have to consider, number one factor, and there's no difference of importance in any varying way. But if the project could be done in a way that where it doesn't require a variance, that's what you have to do.
Yes.
Now, here you have something that's already built. The question is, what is the convenience to you versus the hardship to your neighbor?
Very good.
Does one thing outweigh the other one? Your neighbor's giving us issues that he has. I don't know exactly what the layout of the property is. A survey would help showing everything that's on the property currently. I'm not sure why, when they did the survey a couple of years ago, they just did stakes and didn't put it on paper. Usually, if you get, if you're paying for stakes, which cost more than just a paper plat, they'll give you the paper as well, because it's the same thing. They're reading it off of something too. Personally, I'd like to see the updated survey. I don't know what the rest of the board feels.
I would agree.
I think it's important to know exactly how far this is off the property line. I don't think, this is more of an estimate, I would say, and I definitely would like a survey because this could be one foot off the property line for all I know.
Well, the surveyors put markers in, they put steel spikes in.
Right, but we're not, we're not privy to those.
You know, you didn't get the documentation, so I'm only looking for a pic, you know, I only have a picture here.
If they staked it out, they should, it should be relatively easy for them to give it to you on paper.
Okay, yeah, we didn't know to ask for an update.
That's okay.
Well, at the time, you were doing it for a different reason, but at this point, it's kind of like a home-built platform, gazebo. You know, I'd be-
I'd just like to add something.
It's crucial, yeah.
What is this slate patio?
Just move the microphone over so you can be-
They had a rebuild on their house and they, they went vertically by one story and, and, and the attic, which is a total of 16 feet, that blocked a lot of our sun.
And we didn't know the challenge.
We didn't know the challenge.
Well, they may not have needed a variance, I've no idea.
I don't recall, I mean, it would be hard for me to remember each and every-
There are high requirements for homes. You may have needed one, you may not. I have no clue.
Thirty-five feet.
And we didn't, we didn't know that it was going to go beyond what was presented to us. So I'm curious as to what, what he's talking about. Oh, I know. The back of the house between us and the sterns, we do have-
What we're asking for is that you submit to us for the next meeting
Sure.
a new survey, up-to-date survey showing what's on the property with all the dimensions. It'll give us a better idea. Unless, anybody else in the audience have a comment on the application? Alright, I'm going to move to adjourn this to next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
And that was May what?
June 27th.
Oh, June 27th, I'm sorry. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
So it's just an updated survey?
Correct.
Showing the whole property.
Yeah, okay.
The front of the property?
Everything, yeah, everything.
Okay, that's easy enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, 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 thank you.
Next is Lynch. Come on up to the microphone, if you're here. Property address is 1496 Heights Drive. Application to construct an addition with a rear yard setback of 38 feet where 50 is required. Good evening. Would you want to just give us your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Pat Costabile. I work with the Design Professionals.
Okay. And who's with you tonight?
Rebecca Lynch, owner.
Rosemary Lynch.
Okay, why don't you walk us through the application?
So we're proposing to add a three-car garage and additional living space. The three-car garage to the side of the property. And then the, the living space is, is the space in question on the setback in the rear.
Just above the garage, or?
So no, it's not above the garage. The house is a Cape Cod, so it's, it's only one and a half stories high. So doing a two-story structure on that one side would just create, yeah, total imbalance. Yeah.
So what parts existing, what parts being added?
So right now, you're showing the left side, that's, that's the side that's being, that whole piece is being added on the side, on the left side, and then-
The right side, as you're looking at it?
Yeah, so the other side is the, is the other, is the opposite side. The left, the left piece is existing and the right is, is the addition, but it's, it's setback. It's on the other side. Then there's, I guess you could tell better from the front and the rear elevation.
We have a memo from the building department, signed by Steve Frietta, dated May 20th. He has no objections to the granting of the variance. Anybody in the audience, any comments on this application? Any questions, Sean? Are these the final plans?
Yeah, they are.
So I guess it just is a hill that goes down over the-
Yeah, so, so the back, the back is-
It's very hilly there.
Is, it's steep from the front to the back, the lay to land, and then when it gets to the back, there's like a ditch that's carved out, and, yeah, so, you know, we first, you know, we first went to engineering with, with wanting to spill the water into the ditch, but then we had to put cul-de-sacs and everything to hold the water to stop it from-
Anything else? Alright, we did a site visit on this, I think it was a couple of months ago already, since we didn't, we missed last month's meeting. Or is that from this month? I know we were there, I just don't remember which month we were there. Did your clients have anything they wanted to add? Okay. Alright, I would move that we approve the application to construct an addition with a rear yard setback of 38 feet where 50 is required at 1496 Heights Drive with the usual stipulation that this pertains only to the variance as requested, not the remainder of the property line, and the addition we built substantial conformity to the plans submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
Signs Inc. Application for variance for multiple signs on the front, rear, and side of the building as follows. Front door, the south side is 246.7 square feet facade sign plus two column signs totaling 9.4 square feet, totaling 257.1 square feet. These signs have 111 square feet of frontage, plus is 199.7 square feet above the setback requirement that increase the allowable sign square footage by 50 square feet. Total allowable sign is 161 square feet. Area of signs requested 257.1 square feet. Total variance 96.1 square feet.
Correct.
State your name for the record, please?
James Polinsky from Signs Inc.
Okay, you want to just run down what you got for us?
Yeah, so originally, we were applying for some signs in the, in the rear as well, but after going to planning and them talking about screening of the rear of the building that's on Sol Mill River Road there, we decided that the signs aren't going to work there. The property owner's going to add screening that's been requested from Ibaka as well as the planning.
So these signs are only for the front facade?
Correct. We're scrapping the, the rear and the side west elevation, so we're removing those only. So we're looking for a channel letter that's on the front of the building as well as two, like lower sconce, I'll call them a sconce light, but they're light on a, on the pillar. So there'll be more of a, I would say, ground level or a car level as they drive in and can see it. Those are the only signs that we're requesting at this time.
So what are the small signs? Just the ones down below?
Yes.
Oh, I was just saying TJ Maxx.
Yeah, so they're, they're 14 inches tall, they're four feet wide, they're going to sit on the column, and they're basically just say TJ Maxx. They don't, they don't even, they don't light. They got kind of, it shows here, it's kind of, it's kind of like a half-round shape to them.
Now, that's going, you're talking about the old Kmart building, right?
Correct, yes.
So aren't there other stores going in that building as well?
There will be.
So where are those signs going to go?
Well, this is, so this is the Kmart area. They have 111 square feet, I'm sorry, linear feet, and I believe the other stores are going to continue down.
So they got their own entrances on, being built onto the sides?
Yes, yes. I think you're going to end up with three, I think three storefronts there.
Yeah, and probably three more applications.
So once you got, this is only going to be like in the Kmart parking lot, you know, that we normally, so you're going to put anything on the, from the 118 side? You're going to be able to see the back of the building?
No, we decided against that because-
No back, no side.
No back, no side? Okay.
No, they, yeah, they decided against that because, like I said, the planning department and as well as Ibaka, they're supposed to get some more, they're supposed to have more screening. And originally, they were looking for screening for the AC equipment, like most of the town asked for, or most of the buildings have now. They were, with the setbacks and everything, DOT, I'm sorry, not the DOT, but the setbacks, they weren't thinking that that was going to help put screening on the roof by covering it just, because you're, the elevation, you're up higher. So I think they decided to go more with the, with the, like a landscape plan of more screening with evergreens and things of that nature. So if they do that, you're not, you're not going to see, yeah, you're not going to see the sign. So TJ Maxx was just hoping to go with the, with the front signage.
We have a memo from the building department dated May 21st. No objections to the application. We have a memo from the planning board dated May 22nd. Planning board does not support the rear sign variance or the side, but they have no objections to the front, so basically exactly what you're saying.
Right, I think we all, of course, being the sign guy, I'm the, I'm the last, last one to hear about anything. So at the last minute, they were like, the landlord, luckily the landlord and the attorney was there, and they're like, no, we're going to add screening.
Then we have a memo from Ibaka dated May 20th, May 10th, rather. Did you see the Ibaka memo?
I did not. I don't think they had any objections, though, when I went to the-
No, they have qualifications, so I'm not sure what complies and what doesn't. Front of the building, south elevation. Facade sign plus two column signs, variance of 96.1 square foot is required for a 246.7 square foot facade sign plus two column signs totaling 9.4. The proposal is for the following front facade, five feet, six inches. Red-faced lit channel letters in the words of TJ Maxx be mounted on the front of the building storefront. The overall size is 33 feet, nine and a half inches in width by seven feet, two inches in height.
That's what we're proposing, yes.
Front columns, two non-lit column signs in the words of TJ Maxx in the colors of red and white. The overall size is 14 inches in height by four inches in width.
Correct.
Front of the building, south elevation illuminated under canopy sign. The overall sign is one foot in height by two feet, six inches in width.
Okay, so what TJ Maxx was unclear about was whether or not they are putting a sign underneath, if it would even be allowed to, or fit to go there. It would be an under canopy that would be more recessed back, that pedestrians would see it if they were on the, on the walkway. But we have to see how that lays out and see if that's even going to work there.
Alright, so they also had comments regarding the rear sign, the side sign, but I'm not going to read those because you already scrapped that idea.
Right.
So the board has no objections to the four proposed building front sides, which is items one and two, which is the front side of the building and then the signage, one foot in height by two and a half feet, two and a half in length.
So that would be-
Width, rather.
That would be the one that's on-
Illuminated under canopy sign.
Correct, that would be under there.
So those two, they have no objection to. Not in favor of the signs in the front, in the back, rather, we know that. The board feels that the integration of the monument signs at the 118 intersection at Kear Street and Downing Drive would be significantly more attractive and effective.
That's something that I'm not proposing at this time. I believe that's in planning with the, with the property owner.
Okay.
Trying to get some, two, two new monument signs.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have a comment on the application? Alright, I'm going to move that we approve the application for the variance for the two signs as stated by the applicant, that being the front, the front side, which is south, plus the illuminated under canopy sign.
No, he wants the two column signs.
That's not what they're saying in here. You have the two columns in there also? Where are the column ones?
Those are the ones-
The small ones.
Those are the 14 inch by four feet, non-illuminated.
I don't see those.
Let's see, the side sign.
Oh, plus two columns, yeah. So would we grant that application as long as it's in compliance with items one and two of the Ibaka memo dated May 10th, 2024, which is exactly where we just-
So basically, you're getting an approval for what you're having in the picture, plus the under canopy sign? And you don't know if you're going to do that or not, but-
Yeah, I don't know if it's going to make sense.
Yeah, since Ibaka said it was okay in the memo, we're just going to approve it here tonight.
That's perfect, yeah. Yeah, we're just, as long as we're scrapping the rear, it's fine.
Right.
What I would suggest, since they only have this one copy in the file, is you may want to stop in the building department and just get a copy of this memo.
Yeah, they might have sent it to me.
They probably sent it to me.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing the Ibaka one, but-
But it's basically we're granting you numbers one and two, which is what you asked for.
That's what we want, that's fine.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Application to legalize the existing deck with setback of 4.8 feet where 10 is required at 3786 Indian Hill Road. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm John Turnquist with JT2 Architects. We're here to legalize the deck that's currently on the outside of the residence. It's pre-existing, non-conforming residence as well as the deck.
I noticed you had, you had four previous zoning board applications. This property's had four different decisions already from the zoning board with different approvals over time. One of them's not even from you. It was prior to your ownership.
We've been out there a few times. What year was that house built?
What year was it built?
It was built, actually, 1749. It was used as a trading post till 1789, and then it became a house, I think in 1832, I think. Till then, it was used as a trading post or something else.
Yeah, it, it looks old. It's very eclectic, yeah. Interesting house.
Looks like George Washington visited that when there was revolutionary war recruitment going on there. So Thomas Jefferson was there for quite some time, it seems.
Oh, really? That's really neat. Wow. It still has the pumping well in the front.
Yeah, it's still, many things I have still. There's a fireplace and all those things are still there.
You have to get down in the well. Sometimes they used to throw the coins and stuff in it. You might find some jewelry or something.
Never looking at old wells.
Well, there's a deck and it's, it's in the same plane as the residence and non-conforming. It's right on the road.
But there's nothing around them either.
No, nothing. There's nothing.
We have a memo from the building department dated May 20th. He has no opposition. The four decisions, I referenced, they're all in the file here. One of them's from 1985. It was a variance for an addition, front yard addition. Then there was one from 2009 for another addition. There was one from 2013 for an addition. This house was built in stages. And one, another one from 2013 for front yard canopy over the entrance.
Yes, I remember that one.
I am in the process of also closing out some other permits that are open on the residence.
Oddly enough, three of the four, three of the four decisions have my signature on them.
Any permits from 1749?
I don't go back that far. Anybody in the audience have a comment on the application? We did a site visit on the property last Saturday. This deck had no bearing on anybody else's property because there's nothing else around them having any bearing on. Are they building something next to you? Because there's a driveway up to the left that kind of went nowhere.
Not building. I just leveled it a little bit and putting some grass under it.
So that's yours?
And that's mine.
Okay. So I would move that we approve the variance for, not the variance, we approve the application to legalize the deck with a setback of 4.8 feet where 10 is required with the usual stipulations pertains only to the request- Where ten is required, with the usual stipulations pertains only to the requested variance, not the remainder of the property line. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Good night.
There you go. Let me circle back to the other ones. Anyone here on Kunha? Kunha. Okay, I'm, I'm, they're probably not gonna be here, I'm assuming. We're just gonna adjourn that to next month. How about Suma? Anyone here on that? Suma? Let's do Suma, they probably thought they didn't have to be, it's re, it's, it's renewal after sale.
Aren't they supposed to come?
They're supposed to, but we could.
So why don't we just, why don't we put it off and send a notice?
Cause we did it as administrative, so unless there's a problem, we don't give them a hard time.
All right.
Well, then I could leave and you could take a walk. This is application of special use perm for accessory apartment for new owner at three fifty-six Hallicks Mill Road. Let's just see what we have here, the mailings are all in order. See where the memo is. Memo from the building apartment dated May twenty first, no objections. Anybody in the audience have a comment on the application? All right, I move that we grant the application of special use perm for accessory apartment at three fifty-six Hallicks Mill Road for a period of three years, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't know why everybody else is here.
Meeting's over.
They're doing their civic, you know, they wanna see how, how the zoning board works.
Okay. Seventy-six Route Six Holdings application for a planning, for application of the planning board. Under Town Code Section three hundred dash two oh one A for an interpretation of Town Code Section three hundred dash ninety-seven A. Specifically, whether a two hundred or one hundred foot setback applies to this project, in the event the two hundred foot setback applies, applicant is seeking an area variance of two hundred feet. Per Section three hundred ninety-seven A of this town code. Your name for the record, please.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is David Cooper, I'm a partner with the law firm Azaren and Steinmetz. Here representing, uh, A-Trec Recycling Center, the applicant before the planning board.
Before we begin, if I could, everybody, I know you're all here for this, this application.
Can we please call the conversations at the back of the room, we can hear every word up here, so we need to speak and announcement has to be made, so please.
Please listen carefully, I'm gonna set forth the parameters of what we're here for tonight, so everybody's clear right from the get-go. This is on for an interpretation, it's not on for variance, it's not ripe for variance jurisdictionally. You can't apply for variance until you've been denied a permit by the building department, so we're only on for an interpretation tonight. Now, the interpretation does not say they can build it, it does not say they can't build it, they're only asking us to interpret what the law means. And what they're asking is whether, in a, in this zone, does it, is it a hundred foot setback, is it a two hundred foot setback? Now, this particular application does not only affect this particular application, it's an interpretation of the law, meaning whatever we determine here. Can also be applied to other such applications down the road, now it doesn't have to mean this one. So I know many people here may wanna speak on the application, all I'm telling you is, we do not have jurisdiction. To deny this, to deny the building of the project, or to grant the building of the project, that's not what this board does. So if you wanna come up and tell us that you don't like the application, or you love the application, it's not relevant to this proceeding, cause that's not what this board does. If the, if the usage is approved by the town in this district, which it is, then we have no jurisdiction to say it can't be done. That's a, please don't speak from the audience, I'm just gonna get to that. It's the town board that creates the zoning code, not the zoning board. We only apply it, so, if you're here tonight to oppose the application based upon the fact that you don't like the application, we'll hear what you have to say. But again, it doesn't have any relevance to what our ruling here is tonight. All we're ruling on tonight is the interpretation of this section of the code. Is it a hundred feet, is it two hundred feet? So I'm gonna do first, just so we're clear, is I'm gonna read what that section of the code says. Section three hundred there seventy-seven, under bulk requirements states, Section A. No building shall be located at a distance less than seventy-five feet from the street on which the building fronts. Except that gatehouses, bus stops, shelters and security offices on one story, in height may be located at a distance of not less than thirty feet. From the street or road, and no building shall be located at a distance of less than two hundred feet. From a boundary which adjoins any residence district, or less than one hundred feet from all other boundaries of the lot. So that is what we're looking at, is that last section of the code, which says, is it a hundred feet or two hundred feet? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, there goes the first two pages of my notes, the only, the only other piece I was gonna do in, in the introduction is. Hand up the proof of notice, although I, I don't know if I need a proof of notice.
It's in, it's in, it's in there already.
Okay, all right, um, good. Um, with me tonight is Marvin McManus, the project engineer, as well as Pasquale Cardellami Junior, the principal of the applicant.
Now, just so you know, we're not getting into the basis of your application, because it has nothing to do with our interpretation.
Uh, yeah, yes, well, but that, where I was starting with is the, to frame the question, the question is, you've already read the, the provision. It's not a question of use, as you said, this is a specially permitted, permitted use, and so the use is permitted, it's a question of citing.
Right.
That's it. Um, from a, from a practical perspective, the applicant is proposing to cite the, the, the project. Further to the north of the site, can you get the, no, they can't get that up there. So, we have it on, on the board here, and we're gonna get it on the screen in a second, but. What you're looking at is the proposed citing for the project, which is up to the north, with a one hundred foot setback to the property line to the west. Two hundred to the east, I'm sorry, one hundred to the west, two hundred to the east, and, um, over two hundred to the north. The, uh, building inspector has issued an, an, an opinion that this citing. Is consistent with the zoning code, that it meets the one hundred foot setback, that's what applies here.
The planning board that disagreed.
The, the planning board.
Sent it to us.
Right, referred it over to you for a question, they, they haven't appeared, so, so we're, we're before you, obviously, we're asking that this board. Uh, uh, affirm the opinion of the building inspector. Um, the standard before you is whether or not there's a rational basis to, uh, to arrive.
What's your basis for saying that a hun, it's a hundred feet, not two hundred?
So, four, four bases, but let me just, let me step back and, and, and look at, look at the code itself. The code itself says. No building shall be located less than one hundred feet from a, from a boundary, except where the boundary, quote, adjoins any residential district. The building inspector interpreted that, interpreted that provision to mean the boundary itself is a boundary within the town of Yorktown.
Doesn't say that though in the code.
No, but, but what, but that interpretation is consistent with first, and we'll get to the four, the four, the four grounds, but first, New York State Town Law. New York State Town Law two sixty-one states that municipalities, their, their jurisdiction ends at their boundary lines. Um, so the.
Well, the jurisdiction ends at the boundary line, it doesn't mean that, well, that means that we can't impose our jurisdiction on another town.
No, what, what, what that means is, is that the, that the reference to a residential district ends with residential districts within the town.
Under what basis do you say that?
Uh, under, under, under first, the, the, the consistency with two sixty-one, I also believe that. New York State Department of, Division of Local Government Services and Supports adopts this same interpretation. We, we did ask the Mister, Mister Landy to be here.
He's here.
Oh, so, so I believe Mister Landy could confirm that, in fact, not only is that his interpretation, but. The state also would interpret the, the jurisdiction to end there, that's why we've asked him to be here, so I would hope that the, the board, if not the board, I would ask that Mister.
Well, you can't ask, only the board can.
Well.
Well, yes.
Well, then, 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 Mr. Chairman, I would ask you, if, if you're questioning the basis of that first point, that you ask Mister Landy then to, to, to confirm or, or not confirm. Because I do believe that that's where the state would, would view it. Second, uh, it's consistent with the town of Yorktown's custom and practice. Um, I'm glad that, that you said that the, um, notice of, uh, the, the proof of notice is within the record, cause I wanted to make sure it's in the record. If you look at your code, and if you look at, at who had been noticed for this hearing, which was provided to us by the town assessor's office, the code itself. Indicates only tax lots within the, the town of Yorktown, right, you're, you're even, even your.
So why you publish and also why you have a sign posted, so if anybody else was in the neighboring area, you can see that there's an application.
I, 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 I would respectfully disagree with that, because the, if, if you're asking an applicant to send letters out. Why stop at the municipal boundary, except if, if there's a recognition that.
Cause the publication and the sign is for all to see, not just.
And, and where would Yorktown have the information of who lives there, if it's not within the town boundaries?
Westchester GIS, how, how we, we get it from, most, most, for most other, other municipalities sends the applicant to Westchester GIS. And says, just, just generate a two hundred foot list, doesn't matter where. Your municipality, your custom and practice, is. You, your assessor provides us with the list, and the list is only, only within town.
I would venture to guess that on the scale of whether that's disposive or not, you're kind of really at the bottom.
Well, well, Chairman Fine, remember, the, the standard here is rational basis, right, and so, so the issue.
Rational basis.
Rational basis, right, is, if there's a rational basis, then the zoning board, right, and so. That would be a rational basis for, for, for the building inspector to, to land on, on an interpretation that indicates. When you say residential district, you mean residential districts within the town.
So, so, sorry to interrupt your points, but if other towns do notice neighboring towns. You know, what is, then, then why would they have to do that if the state law doesn't require it?
The, the, the question before the zoning board is how to interpret residential district, that term. And so, what, what I'm, what I'm using that, that example from, from your town custom and practice is, is how your town.
We're not defining what a residential district is.
No, just not, not what a resident, not the definition of a residential district, just, is it the residential district in your town boundaries? Or not, that's the question.
The code states, the code states, two hundred feet from a boundary which adjoins any residence district. Doesn't say resident district in the town of Yorktown, doesn't say resident district outside the town of Yorktown.
Right, and so.
Any resident district, that's not ambiguous, it's fairly clear, any residence district.
I, so, so I, I respectfully disagree with, with, with your, your, your point about the ambiguity, because you have. Your building inspector who interprets the code this way, and then you have.
But he interprets it this way or not, no offense to our building department or anybody else, doesn't, is, is inapposite as far as, we're interpreting with the code.
Hold on, hold on, wait, you, you keep, you keep cutting me off, let me, let me make, let me move the point on that one. Your, your question was ambiguity, right? Is there an ambiguity?
I didn't ask the question, I made a statement.
Okay, well, that, you're right, you're right, well, I'm responding to your statement. You, you, there is an ambiguity in the record, clear ambiguity in the record. You've got a, you've got a building inspector who is charged in the first instance to make interpretations of this code, who has made the interpretation of this code. And that interpretation is a hundred feet. You've got a planning board who is questioning that and says, I, that, that, we have, we have a question of it. That is two agencies in the town with divergent interpretations of, of this code, that is by definition an ambiguity. And so, because zoning is, is in derogation of property rights, any ambiguity has to be interpreted in favor of the property.
Someone's perceived ambiguity does not make it an ambiguity, it just makes it their perception.
But by, by that logic, any interpretation is an ambiguity, right?
Anytime someone says, I'm not sure what you're talking about, doesn't mean, doesn't mean it's ambiguous.
No, 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 the distinction here is, you, you've got two different.
So why would the code allow? But no, why would, no, I, I kinda know where you're going, you're saying it's two, two agencies within the town.
Right.
Is relevant, but, you know, the code allows agencies within the town to seek interpretations. So by your logic, anytime there was a disagreement, it's gotta go in favor of an applicant, no matter what.
No, just, just when there's, when there's an ambiguity.
But, but isn't, but your definition of an ambiguity is two disagreements, that's an interpretation, right? So like, every interpretation doesn't result.
No, you, you, the, the question that you're, the question, the question that the board is, is asking, which is, which is, which is at the heart of this, this question is. Does the residential district in this, the term here, does it refer to residential district only in the town? Or does it refer to a residential district in any, in any municipality?
Right.
Right, and so you've got one agency that says it only, it only applies, that term only applies to, within the town boundaries. You've got another agency that's saying, we think it applies outside. That is an ambiguity. You've got two, you've got two agencies that are interpreting this same provision separately. And so, before the, the zoning board tonight is what I would submit, is an ambiguity, and because of, because of the well-established law, that when there's an ambiguity such as this one. It's gotta be, gotta be interpreted.
So then why are you here? I mean, if that's the answer, then like, why do we, the zoning board have to be into it, so now there's a third party that's gonna be involved with the ambiguity.
The, the planning board sent us here, I, I, I don't know, we, we, we don't.
Apparently, we do have the ability to make a render an opinion.
I'm, yeah, I know, I, I, I agree.
You're saying the law says our opinion, if it's, if it's an ambiguity, has to go in favor of the applicant, so is that?
The property owner, yes, yeah.
Is that number three?
That, with number four, the, the, you get, you, we skipped right to the ambiguity, because the three was, was the building inspector's interpretation.
All right, I'm gonna cross out three.
Yeah, yeah, you, you put that together, right. Uh, look, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll sort of end where, where I started on, on, on the point. Is from, from a practical planning perspective, right, the use is permitted at, at the site, it's not a question.
We're not discussing the use.
Right, it's a matter of citing. If the interpretation is that it's two hundred feet, what happens is, the, the. The building just gets pushed much closer to Route, Route Six, right, right now, with a hundred foot setback, we can, we can keep the building.
Well, that's more, that's more of a variance relevant issue, I would say.
It could be, but I, just from a practical perspective, why the applicant is saying, hey, and, and we agree with the building inspector that the, that the one hundred foot setback is.
I understand that, but as I said in the beginning too, that our interpretation of this section of the code doesn't only pertain to this application. So whether it makes, it doesn't make sense for this particular application, we have to look at what, what that decision's gonna mean in other applications.
It, it, true, although, although that, this provision only applies in the industrial district, and so, so you are, you are limiting the, the interpretation just to your industrial district, district. But I, I, that, that is a point. We have, we have also requested a variance, I know that the board wants to split them up.
Well, it sounds like we want, we have no jurisdiction over variance till you've been denied. What triggers a variance application is denial by the building department, you haven't received a denial yet, so you can't hear a variance.
Well, well, that, but that's the, but that's the very point, right, is, is that, there, there, in, in that case, there is no appeal before you. Because, because we agree with the.
Right, it's not an appeal, it's an interpretation. You didn't send us here, the planning board did.
Yeah, but, so that, so if you, if you were to, to tonight, vote that, that it's, it's a two hundred foot setback.
Correct.
Automatically, our, our application becomes ripe, and it's already before you.
No, it's not automatic, the building department still has to issue a denial. That's just procedural, that's, that's the way it is.
No, no, I, I, where does it say that, that?
The, the building department has to issue a denial, otherwise there's nothing to appeal.
Once, once you, once you issue the interpretation, that, that would be, that would be the.
We're not hearing a variance sign if it's denied.
No, but, I, I, I understand that, I understand that. I do, I do think from a practical perspective. That if, if the, the, if this board right now is, is of the opinion that it's going to interpret this to be a two hundred foot setback. That it's better for all of us, if you were to hold off on that vote, consider the variance, and then vote at the same time in one, in one resolution.
I'm not gonna bisect it like that, because one, i- if we grant, if we said you're correct with the hundred, hundred, you wouldn't need the variance.
Then, but, well, it's that, but that's on us, right?
We plead the alternative, we can't decide the alternative.
No, but here, but the, the issue is this, is right, if, if, if we would need to appeal this decision, right, we, we would have to, we would have to file the Article seventy-eight. Before you, before you've even, even reached the, the, the variance, which.
Them's the brakes.
Yeah, well, I, look. No skin off of our back, I just don't wanna.
I'm saying, that's the way it works. I don't create the rules, I just have to live by them.
So look, let, let's go back to, to the, to the interpretation. The, 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 the issue before the board is, is whether or not there's a rational basis, right? I understand board members may be questioning whether or not you internally believe it or not, but that's not the standard, right? The standard is, is there a rational basis to support the building inspector's determination? If so, then I would submit that this board should, should also affirm that, that decision.
Okay. John, why don't you come up? We have the building inspector here, John Landy. Good, just give us your, your appearance for the record.
I'm sorry?
Just give your appearance for the record.
John Landy, building inspector, town of Yorktown.
Now, you, you gave a determination on this application, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and your determination was a hundred feet, correct?
That is correct.
We understand the reasoning from what counsel's, his reasoning behind it. Um, I don't have any further questions of Mister Landy, anybody else have any questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience have any que, things to say? Come on up. What?
My question's for Mister Landy, cause I have, wait, I have a question.
You don't get to ask Mister Landy questions.
The public does, but, but the applicant doesn't.
No one doesn't.
They can ask us questions.
Good evening, Michael Grace, um, I was the former town supervisor and former town attorney, going, going all the way back to the mid nineteen eighties. And I'm very familiar with the subdivision there, I think, Chairman, you're right, I don't wanna get into the merits of the application, just the interpretation. But quite significantly, the custom and practice from the town of Yorktown, going back, we're now almost thirty years. Has always been to respect the uses. has always been to respect the uses that are adjacent and outside the borders of the town. So in a situation like this, if we did anything like a zoning change, or, or, or a, a, anything that would border the adjacent municipality, they'd be put on notice of the application, and we'd respect what, we, we'd always respect the other town and the uses that were bordering the Town of Yorktown. In this particular situation, having drafted a lot of legislation for the Town of Yorktown in the past, I may have even drafted some of the, this portion of the industrial, uh, uh, u- uses.
This was what, 2012, this district?
Yeah, you know what, I did so many, but we would, that type of language would be in respect to what was not just within the jurisdiction of the town, but what would be outside or abutting the town. And that would be the custom and practice of, of, of the town always, as I know it, from the time that I have been town attorney through the town, I've been town supervisor. So the custom and practice was always to take into consideration what the uses were in, in the, where, where you had a boundary that was adjacent to the next town. So as far as custom and practice, I think the applicant is absolutely wrong in, in terms of his interpretation of what historically was how the town operated. As a matter of fact, notice in a situation like this, even for an interpretation, would usually be given to the adjacent municipalities. In this case, the Town of Somers, we would ask them, you know, for their opinion on this particular application. And there's a reason for it, because as a town, town supervisor.
Here's the file.
We don't, we don't, we wanted to do what's best for our town, and we don't want the adjacent town to dump all the noxious uses on our borders.
Right.
So there was mutual respect all the time in, in terms of especially uses that have the potential of being noxious uses, that we would go to those neighboring municipalities and get their opinion as to what they were looking for, and, and because we wanted that same respect if they were to do something. The fact that we don't have jurisdiction, legal jurisdiction over the Town of Somers, or I think Valley to the north, does, is completely and utterly irrelevant.
It's a professional courtesy.
It's a specious argument that shouldn't even be considered. And it's, as far as a rational basis, that argument is also specious as well. This is quite well-understood by you, the board, that you are the interpreter of the zoning code. And I don't think there's any ambiguity here. And just to create an ambiguity doesn't mean that you can modify the zoning code by raising the fact that you think there's an ambiguity, so therefore you can change the code. The code is, it can't be any clearer. And matter of fact, the remedy is, is, is basically to uphold what the code says, in plain English, that it's 200-foot setback, and if they, it, it, if there's for any reason that that may be mistaken interpretation, the relief really is with the town board to have them then re-legislate that portion of the code i- i- if they want to decrease the setback for the, you know, for, uh, where the use is adjacent to a, you know, a, um, adjacent municipality. So quite frankly, there, you know, there, there is relief at that level as well. And lastly, my hope is that this was referred to the town board. As they are, you may be the interpreter of the code, but it's, should they think that there is any question around.
They could change it.
They can change it, and make it.
100%. Before we move on to anybody else, just wanna read a couple of memos.
Thank you.
We have a memo from the planning board dated April 25th. At its meeting of March 11th, 2024, the planning board discussed the subject project. The applicant proposes a 40,000-square-foot recycling center in a I-1 zone. The proposed building lies 100 feet from the eastern property line which adjoins a residential zone district in the Town of Somers. The planning board believes that pursuant to Section 300-201A of the Yorktown zoning code, the building must be 200 feet from the boundary because it adjoins a residence district. The applicant's attorney believes that the planning board may not take that fact into account because the residential zone in question lies within the Town of Somers. The code contains no limiting language that indicates that a residence zone in another town adjacent to the subject property disqualifies requirement of a 200-foot, 200 feet from being met. Pursuant to Section 300-201A of the Yorktown zoning code, the planning board requests that the zoning board of appeals decide the following question. Involve the interpretation of any provision of this chapter under Section 300-97A of the zoning code, whether or not a 200 or 100-foot setback requirement applies to the application of A-Track Recycling Center 76, Route 6 Holdings, Inc. For site plan, special permit, and wetland approval. The referral of the planning board is for interpretation of the above referenced code section only. The planning board does not and has not endorsed or supported any setback variances related to the layout of this proposed site plan as of this date. And then we have, that's April 25th. And there's another memo from the planning board dated May 22nd, at its meeting of May 6. The planning board discussed the subject referral. As stated in the previous memo, the planning board has not made any determination on the need for variance and awaits the zoning board of appeals interpretation of Section 300-201A of the zoning code. So those are the memos I have. There are some written public comments that are in the file, including comments from people who live in the Town of Somers. I haven't found any, I, I did review them, I haven't found any of them that are in favor of this particular application. I'm not gonna read them, but they are part of the record that all of us have seen. If you wanna speak on it, you're free to do so. But please keep in mind that I stated previously, we're only here to talk about the interpretation. Yes, sir, come on up. When you come up to the mic, just please give us your name.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is John Marone. I just wanted to bring up two things before any decision is made on variance or whatever. I was wondering if it would be possible for the town attorney to actually submit a legal argument in defense of the code on behalf of the town, so.
Well, he advises us.
Okay, but at, at this point, I don't, I've only heard an argument from the applicant. I haven't heard an argument on the basis of the town. So I'm wondering if the town attorney or somebody else can submit a legal argument oppose, uh, uh, the opposite opinion. I don't, I haven't heard that.
Usually, usually that comes after, after we make our determination. If there's an Article 78 proceeding, which is generally how you, how the applicant would appeal, is we denied the, his application.
Okay.
That's when the town gets involved. Right now, it's up to us to make our own determination.
Okay, that.
We could ask him for guidance on the law.
Right.
But we haven't yet asked him for.
It's still ultimately our decision.
Okay. Um, I guess that brings up another question. We only found out about this a couple of weeks ago when we got the notice of interested parties. And two things regarding that. One, it, it doesn't seem that the various boards have a very good communication amongst each other except to refer things, like there's a town board, there's a planning board, there's a zoning board.
They all do different things.
Exactly, but you all should be, in my opinion, concerned about the welfare of the community as opposed to just what's in the law. And speaking.
Well, as far as that's concerned, each board has its own parameters. The zoning board of appeals is designed by state law, not town law, to overrule or determine things that are building code, building code variances, that sort of thing. It's the only, actually the only board that's required by state law. But we don't create the law. That's not our job. We can only interpret what it says.
Got it.
So we can't say, "Well, we don't like the law, we're not gonna follow it." We can only interpret.
But that's not our only function. So this is an interpretation, and that's all we're doing. But a variance, we do consider the environment and, you know, the public.
Right.
But again.
You're not doing a variance tonight, you're just doing an interpretation.
Only the interpretation.
So the town attorney doesn't need to get involved with the interpretation. He needs to get involved when the variance question.
If we ask him for advice, he'll give us advice, but doesn't have to, you know.
The town.
Publish an opinion.
There, there's no one in the ta, the town government that necessarily, well, anyone could have an opinion, just like any member of the public, but there's no specific responsibility of the town boards to come and argue against something.
That's the question. So in other words, nobody advocates for the town.
Nobody advocates for us?
Well.
I ask you to keep, if you can't keep your, keep your voices down and not make comments from the audience, you're gonna have to leave.
So, I'm sorry.
They can. They, they're, they're not required to. They're a member of the public or the town, right? So the town.
Look, this, the way it works is the town board creates the law. They create a law after they have a public hearing where the public gets to speak. It's then put into town code. Then it, then it's, it's up to us to interpret it based on what comes in front of us. If you don't like the town code, the town law, you go to the town board and say, "Hey, we want you to change it." But we don't have the authority to change it.
Got it. Okay, then, my last point is, as I mentioned, we only found out about this a couple of weeks ago, even though you mentioned in the record that there's been meetings about this.
The planning board has met on it.
But that's what I mean.
Planning board meetings are televised.
Right, but unless there's some kind of, like we just got the written notification a couple of weeks ago, there's no way that we're going, I mean, you can't expect us to watch every meeting to see whether there's going to be something.
So a property owner is going to the planning board to do a project that's legal in the zone that they're trying to do. So I don't, you know, you'd have to tell us why you think you deserve a notification for every project that's legal within a zone.
If the project impacts the town, I think.
How does it impact?
It's only when, it's only when it falls outside the parameters of the town code that they have to have a publicly noticed hearing. Otherwise, all the meetings, the meetings are public meetings, but they don't have to be noticed in that sense of each particular application.
But this particular, um, letter that we got was from the building department zoning board, I guess.
No, it was actually from the applicant.
Oh, 'cause it said.
The applicant, the applicant.
It said Town of Yorktown Building Department.
Please do not make a comment, or I'm gonna ask you to leave, you keep doing that.
That's just a third time.
The applicant, the applicant sends out the notices.
Okay.
It's on a form that comes from the building department. The building department does not send out.
What I would ask then is that whoever's in charge of who they're supposed to notify, I think you can see that there's a lot more than the eight houses that were notified on Gay Ridge Road that they should be concerned. Obviously, there's a lot more people concerned than just the eight houses.
The law only says that you have to notify adjacent homeowners.
But that's what, and that's what I guess I'm asking you to address.
That's again, that's in the town code.
It's a, the law says this is who you notify, and this is what gets notified.
So you only have to notify eight houses even though it affects the entire community.
This isn't sent out by the zoning board.
Well, the notification is a letter.
It contains it from downstairs, the building block. I'm sorry.
The notification is a letter. There's articles, advertisements published in the newspaper. There's other forms of notification. There's signs on the property.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
So all of this notification follows the town code for notification.
Right.
So we're not gonna discuss, you know, I mean, you could, you could make an argument that notification was not, uh, legal because it didn't comply with the town.
If we make a decision that you don't like and you wanna appeal it, you can appeal it and say one of your reasons, we weren't properly noticed. But we haven't reached that point yet.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is if, if the proposal was submitted to the planning board over six months ago.
Because there was no, there was no need for anything at that point from any other board.
They, they publish an agenda. You can look at those agendas. You know, every application doesn't require the same type of notice.
It's the same thing.
I, I guess that's.
Again, it's the applicant.
I, I guess that's what I'm, I'm not understanding is if it.
Let me just point out one thing, 'cause we keep getting sent the same form. This is a notice you receive in the mail. The building department, the Town of Yorktown, did not send you this notice. If you look at the return address on your envelope, it came from the applicant. It's only the form that came from the town.
Okay, well, I'm, we're new to this, and I think that's the confusion, is when you see something that has a heading, Town of Yorktown Building Department.
You're being notified, the applicant, they were sending you a copy of the application.
Right, but we didn't understand that it came from the applicant. We thought it was coming from the town. So we're like, why is this the first we're hearing of it?
I can't, I can't tell you why you, you think one thing or the other, right? It's not.
Okay.
If I may.
That your town attorney wants to say something.
Go ahead.
If, we can, sir, I can, I'm happy to discuss with you afterwards.
You know, we can connect, and if you have any questions, I can either answer them or have them answered for you.
Okay.
About the process or, you know, anything.
Yeah, just, okay.
Okay, anyone else?
Good evening, J. Cops. Just a couple of comments. First, anybody in any town can go online and request that they automatically be emailed every agenda from every board in the town.
100%.
So it's out there, it's available. I'm opposed to this project. I think the 200-foot is right. Doing anything else just makes us bad neighbors and will create a militarized zone between towns with each town then free to go after the other town on the town line. I think the interpretation of the planning board and council for the planning board is 100% correct.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Michael Kiernan, and I'm not ambiguous.
You sure?
The neighborhood question is here, right?
You gotta, you gotta address us.
I was pointing to the subdivision, which is part of Somers, which is where I call home.
Okay.
So we're not ambiguous. I, I think that whether other people don't know it or not, yeah, we're a Somers municipality, but our children go to Lakeland schools, and we have Yorktown POs. So I ask that you take that in consideration, that we're real people. And an imaginary line here is not gonna, you know, take impact.
I understand.
Just asking you to take into consideration. Thank you.
Good evening. Anthony Slantone. I'm here on behalf of Whispering Pine Landscape. They are the adjacent owner, which you're probably aware of, and Mr. Cook is here as well, the owner of the company. And we just wanna make our position clear that we're totally opposed to any different, any change in that setback. Any, you know, when the wind blows, bringing the smell over into his property, any other, you know, adverse effects of it, he's gonna be dramatically affected. His company's gonna, he owns a lot of property.
What's his property zone is?
He's, he's commercial also.
Okay.
And so we just wanna make it clear, we're very vehemently opposed to any change.
So it is part of the border then commercial and part of its residential, because you just said commercial.
It's all, no, it's all commercial. There's the, the retail and the, the.
Yeah, but what we're here to say is that, you know, we were told that this project borders a residence zone.
Well, it's not the only property. He's not, his client's not the only one on that zone.
Well, no, he's actually homeowner as well up there, so, but.
But so there's two different zones that we're bordering here on this. There's commercial and residential.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
That's commercial.
There's a nursery and a landscape.
Anyone else? I just wanna see, anyone else get the people in? Anyone else? Come on up. One second, ma'am.
It's a residential zone.
That's what I'm getting at.
He has a commercial property located in that zone.
I thought that was, that's why I asked, 'cause I thought that was a residential zone.
I'm sorry, was mistaken.
We live here.
Gotta give us your name first.
Andre Dalshart.
Yeah, speak closer to the microphone.
Andre Marone. Most of you have seen my emails. We live here, across from Route 6. Route 6 is already teeming with traffic, accidents every day or two, right getting into Whispering Pines. We hear the traffic in our house. We petitioned eight years ago to have a wall put up along Route 6 because we can't sleep in the morning because the tracks, the, the trucks coming out from Navajo Road, 6:00 in the morning, are already terrible. Downshifting going into Route 6, into Navajo Road? That's just us. That's just the people who live across the street. Everybody who uses Route 6 as a thoroughfare to get to Maipac, to get to their homes. That road wasn't built for this amount of traffic that we already have. And this project, and don't get me wrong, I'm a huge believer in recycling. I believe in solar. I think it's fantastic. You just need to do it the right way. The fact that they took down a forest and scrubland to put up a solar farm behind a pit, it's perverse.
That has nothing to do with this application.
You're right. I'm just saying we. I'm just saying we need to be smart about the applications that we take into consideration. I think solar is fantastic, we did it wrong that time. Fine, let's consider it a different way next time. Let's consider what we're doing to the neighborhood. This road is already overflowing with traffic, it wasn't built for that. I understand that Route 6 is managed by the state, not by the town. So, this is an issue that we all need to take into account. However, that doesn't mean that we don't need to use common sense as to what you go in. It is zoned commercial. But commercial can mean different things.
But it specifically permits.
Commercial can mean.
Specifically permits this.
Please let me speak for just.
No, let me, no, let me speak.
Okay.
It's zoned commercial and it's zoned specifically for this purpose. It says permitted use in this purpose. We can't tell somebody they can't do that because it's allowed to be done. All we can do is follow what the code says.
We count on our elected officials to have our best interest at heart.
Well, that's why you have to oppose, that's why it's a town board issue, not a zoning board issue. We do not have the authority to change the law. We're only interpreting the law, that's what I said right at the beginning. We don't have any authority over this application whatsoever. It's only an interpretation we're here for. The town board writes the laws, not us.
I understand.
It's just an interpretation of the law. We're not reviewing the merits of the, of the application, you know, all you're saying, we understand. But we're not reviewing that here. All we're doing is an interpretation of the law this evening and that's all we can.
And this could be any.
This is our opportunity, our first opportunity to get in front of you a little bit.
I'm saying, it's, and it's fine, but.
It's a good trust rehearsal, there's going to be more of these.
The problem is, we're not the ones you got to tell it to.
ATRAC is a company that only came into existence back in October. If you were to look it up, ATRAC didn't exist a year ago.
What's that have to do with the application?
Because ATRAC is CarTech. And if you look up CarTech, we have issues with that company.
Again, it has nothing to do with the interpretation of the code.
Okay, I just want people to know that these are the people who we're doing business with.
I understand, but again, it doesn't, it doesn't have a bearing on our, our interpretation.
And AAA carding.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you want to say something? Always.
Brooke Sessanti. I have a question, so are these homes within the 200 feet?
I couldn't tell you, not from looking at it.
They're not? Oh, okay, thank you, that's what I meant. So, so it's all, that's 100 feet? There's not one residence within 200 feet? What were we talking about?
It's residential district.
It's zoning.
Residential district.
Doesn't have to be a house, just a district.
That's what I meant.
It doesn't have to be there today, but it's lea.
So, it's a residential district.
Yeah, it's legally permitted to be a residence in the future, whether it's here today or not.
So, where is the residential district?
It's, you see the red line?
Outside the red line.
It's going vertical, it's right to the right of the red line.
I'm not asking for the town line, I'm asking for the residential district within 200 feet. Where do they?
Right there.
Because I don't think it's like really presented on this, so I'm just trying to understand.
There's no, there's no subdivision lines.
We're not looking at that map per se to make our interpretation, we're determining what the laws are.
No, I know, I'm just trying to understand, because I.
If you go into the town of Somers, I'm sure there's a zoning map.
This is all residential district.
So, this is all residential district?
Yes, but this is a state wetland, so there won't be any building.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else? Did you want to? No, one more.
Howard Walter, a 33-year resident of Yorktown. I'm against the variance for a simple reason that.
Not a variance.
Okay, the 200-foot setback, because you have to appreciate the border of our next town, Somers. They could be dumping stuff on our, our border all the time and that's why I'm against it. I'm also against this project because if you look on the north-south corridors, you have Route 9, Route 100, and 684. They're going to have trucks coming from south of the county, probably east and west also. Where are these trucks going to go on Route 6?
Again, that's not part of the interpretation.
I know, this is why I'm against.
I understand your feelings, but it's not part of the interpretation.
They're going to go into all our neighborhoods to get to better routes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, I'm not trying to limit what you're saying, I'm just saying it's not relevant to our, what we're doing here tonight. I understand people are opposed to the application, that's not what we're here to consider. We're here to consider the interpretation of the law. Anyone else?
I don't need to come up.
Yeah, you do.
My name is Kathy Schwartz, I live at Hidden Meadows. I'm just wondering, do they already own this property?
Yes.
I don't know whether they own, they, they, it's either owner or contract vendee, one or the other.
Okay.
They have standing to make the application, if that's your question. Did you want to add something? Yeah?
No.
Oh, okay.
I mean, the comments, as you said.
I welcome your no.
Yeah, the comments were not, most of them were not relevant to this, which is before the board now. So, it's more of a matter of procedure for us.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I'm going to move that we close and reserve this application, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, close and reserve simply means we're not hearing any more testimony on it. We have nothing else on the agenda, you ready to vote on it?
I could vote on it.
Ready to vote on it?
Do you want to deliberate at all?
You can, it's up to you, if you think to ask each other.
Just to have the record, you know, should there be deliberations in the record?
No. Just, please keep your voices down.
Yeah. Excuse me, back of the room, can we please hold it down? Thank you.
As long as we don't need deliberations in the record, then we can just vote.
Adam, we don't need anything else, do we?
We, we could, could put something in writing, we could put a, you know, decision.
Well, we can make our decision and obviously put it in writing when we get the minutes.
So, I, I have a question.
You're already closing and reserved. That's why I asked any more questions. All right, so you want, you want to decide on it? I mean, my personal opinion is that the words of the code are clear, they're not ambiguous. It says any residential district, doesn't say any resident district within the town of Yorktown, doesn't say any resident district outside the town of York, it says any residential district, which mean, means another town could be another state as long as it's a residential district.
Right.
So, anybody have other varying opinions on that?
No.
Okay, so I would move then that the board adopt the, the interpretation that town code section 300-97A, that portion where it says that no building shall be located a distance of less than 200 feet from a boundary which adjoins any residential district or less than 100 feet from other boundaries pertaining to all districts, whether they are inside the town of Yorktown or outside the town of Yorktown. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, procedurally, now that, I mean.
You got to go to the building department and get denied, then apply for your variance.
I, I'm.
If you're, if you're leaving, please keep it down, because.
Yeah, this is, this is actually going to be boring only for us, but I just, I'm trying, I'm trying to understand the actual mechanics here. You're saying, we, because we've already applied to the building department, they've already issued a, an interpretation and now you've overturned it.
It's not a denial.
No, no, I get it, but now, now, now you have issued the denial, I think under.
We've added to the ambiguity, I guess, I get, I don't, it's.
We just made an interpretation, it's not a denial.
You're going to get something different, you're going to get something in writing.
Well, that's, that's fine, but we want to be on, on, on your jun agenda because this is, this is going to delay the review of the application and.
I have enough to apply for variance right now as it stands.
We already have, yeah.
I don't think you apply with building though, only with planning, you have to apply with us now.
We, we did apply through building, yeah, we did, this, this application came through building, yeah.
Talk to the building department, they could, you can get on and get your mailings in in time, I don't, no problem.
That's fine, as, as long as we're not delayed, that's fine, yeah. Okay, well then hopefully we'll see you next month.
I look forward to it. I believe that covers everything on the agenda, so I move that we adjourn the meeting to next month, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night and happy zoning.